Thursday, March 3th, time is seven fifteen fourteen. We had a small delay due to the walkthrough of the town hall restoration area. Okay, gentlemen, all three second, all three second in present. Mr. Leo Martell is a senior citizen of Dunbar. Dean Camo is on inbound, he should be here in about two minutes. Gentlemen, I have some minutes from last week, I'm gonna start off with the regular minutes first.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes as amended for March twenty third.
I'll second that. Any discussion on those minutes? Are we not all in favor? David, we can change the non-public minutes online?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes as. I'll second your motion like. Any discussion on those? There is, there are going to be.
Not see up in the open.
Um, other than that, you were just, that was good summary?
Yeah.
All okay, Bill?
Aye.
I have that. You're going to read it twice? You can just put them right through.
It's because you weren't there on the last one.
I wasn't.
My reaction was.
Well, that's your cross. Because you sent them to us right over there. Did I call for motion? It's on, yes, I did. Yeah, I said, okay, thank you. David, so I say thank you for helping us walk through the library. Town Hall Restoration, it was, it was good to see it. Seems funny, but the closer we get to the end, the more little bits that show up. We have to finish up, so I'll be thinking that we're getting there. It's just about there. In fact, I saw Mary put out something online that she's gonna have a song opening for her downstairs.
Yeah.
Which is good. Just gonna make sure that she's secure, I don't want people walking out there on that.
Yeah, I think we'll close them door before she does that.
Yeah, okay, the consensus is. Okay, I'm gonna, public comment now?
Yeah, um, I wanted to, uh, let you know, the, the rec committee, I spoke with the treasurer today via internet, uh, email. And it looks like they're gonna be good workers, people who are willing to do things because the, all of the banners I collected that they were gonna throw out.
Correct.
They're having them cleaned, and they're gonna put them back up.
Great. Because I'm, I'm very happy to see that committee come back to life.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I was pretty impressed with that, you know? I asked a question, I got an immediate answer, it was nice.
It's been very easy to work with.
I'm, I'm gonna use a selectmen as example, we have a gentleman over here to my right, look, and he's who's, uh, who is exactly, uh, we call him a senior citizen, approaching senior citizen status. It's good to see young people get involved.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can I say that to you, compliment? Dave, sorry, you don't fit that.
No.
Okay, but the thing is, I, I, as I said, it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
And I look forward to seeing something other than a little trip to Boston.
No, right, I agree, but it looks like they're gonna be more active in working with.
And I think, as we said earlier, we'll adjust, uh, either fire or need as far as budget, the concerns.
Yeah, because I've seen them post on Facebook, the community page too, asking, you know, what activities the community would like to see.
Good.
I don't know the results, didn't really keep up with it, but I know that they posted, and paperwork coming, they're on it. So it seems like they're gonna expand their, uh, list of activities that are offered. It's gonna be good.
You know, the, the, not to demean anybody, but the past, uh, rec committee was more involved in one thing, and never encompassed the whole town, you know?
Right, yeah.
And so, it's nice to see that.
And that, that was, as you recall, that was my, like, recommendation that they incorporate all age groups.
Yeah, we've been saying that for years, Mike, you know, just like, what, you know, what about the elderly people? They might wanna play cards somewhere, you know?
Exactly.
Simple things.
Exactly. Simple is good sometimes.
Yeah.
Anything else, please?
No, thank you.
All right, bring it back to the board, uh, let's get some down business to talk to. Uh, we have the first item taken care of. Next item is the bid policy, lean made copies, I have, I brought my own copy, uh, uh, we talked about, uh, this was made in twenty fourteen, that's almost nine years ago, I think after nine years, uh, with some inflation, we had the last year and a half, we can, uh, adjust some policies. I know the policies are all working, but I think, uh, Justin, you were correct, it's the month on Monday we need it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if anybody made a, uh, a recommendation back to lean before it showed that we needed a, um, a public meeting disclosed fourteen days before, that wasn't in reference to this.
It was the seven days. I double-checked it, it's a seven-day public notice.
Did you read it?
I, I thought I did, and I thought it was correct.
Okay, it's not, it's not anything to do with our bid policy, if you have it, I'll point it out to you.
Yeah, I don't have a copy, but I.
Okay, but, but, let's get.
Just to change it, or?
Yeah, just to public give him what he needs. But let's get down to that degree, let's talk about the vitamins in the.
If you grab it while we're talking about, that's fine, I think.
Yeah, I think we'll do that. All right, well, it's really, some paragraph three, will you agree?
Yeah, I think everything else looked good to me. I think only in the language, I think, gives enough, uh.
Enough flexibility.
Yeah. This is my thought.
Okay.
I'll let you guys go. Um, item number C?
That's what we're talking about?
Yeah. I'm, I think we need to adjust all three of them. But item number C, I think that should go to twenty thousand myself.
No, from five thousand to twenty thousand?
No, Mike, I'm giving my opinion.
Oh, I'm talking about, oh, oh, no, oh, you're talking.
I'm, I'm.
Re-seater.
Yeah. I'm kinda going backwards.
You went the wrong way.
You went the wrong way, David.
I know, I started there because I knew where I wanted to end on that one.
Okay.
So now, go to B, and it's five to ten, I think that should be ten to fifteen. To fifteen, okay. And then the practical, I think you could go to seventy-five hundred instead of five.
What are you gonna do, what are we gonna do in between though, from seventy-five to ten?
No, right there, from seventy-five when you hit ten, oh.
You gotta make a whole match.
Oh, yeah, I, I apologize for that. Either do the center at seventy-five, or make that seventy-five, ten. Either one. You follow me, Mike?
Yeah, I do, I think it's, um, I, I think your month's a little bit high, I, I, the formal selection, I don't know, it's, I think, um, thirty-three percent increase would be fine, or fifty percent increase, bringing up the fifteen K rather than one, you're going a hundred percent increase over item C.
And the reason I did that, Mike.
One hundred percent, though, that's, that's a huge increase.
But I'm, I'm gonna tell you the reason I thought that, is looking at the bids we got back on various projects, there's almost hardly any projects we can do that won't hit that twenty thousand dollar level, that's what we're talking about. And you realize if they don't hit that, like, we gotta do the request for pricing and send it out, and hit the whole formal bid list, where lean types it all up.
Gotcha.
One of the selectmen's reviews that, they make sure it's written up, you know, the same.
Right, right, that, that's a little more, as a form.
It's quite a process, so that's why I wanted to bump that one to twenty. And the other ones, I don't care about, but I know that in the middle one, we should be at least at fifteen. And then the other one.
So what's the between, is same number and then go up?
Well, we start on the top one, C, we're gonna start backwards, like.
I did backwards already, because I went through this at home already. But I did the top one at twenty thousand, because I looked at a bunch of bids we got last year.
You say top, is it A, B, or C?
C.
Okay, C.
Twenty, and then I put B at ten to fifteen thousand instead of five to ten. I went up five thousand on each of those. All right, and then, on the other one, on, on number one, I went to seventy-five, but like Justin said.
It's gotta go, uh, ten to, uh, ten to twenty.
Yeah, so the, so B should be seventy-five oh one to fifteen then, right?
Well, yeah, so, well, my opinion is, I think seventy-five hundred for the first one is good, but the second one, we would have to go seventy-five to the twenty thousand, because otherwise we'd have to move C to fifteen thousand, right? Because you would have nothing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
That's why I was agreeing with you.
So seventy-five to twenty on the second one.
And I think that's a good range for us, there's numerous projects throughout town that I think would fit this, and it's a good way to.
Okay, seventy-five oh one to twenty is what, for B?
Correct, yeah, Justin's right on both of those.
And then twenty oh one and higher for sealed bids.
I'm gonna give you an example, when we did this roof over here to bid, it was about eighty thousand dollars, because we were stripping the roof and re-roofing it on this bid, and we had three good competitive bids. But if we didn't do it then, we'd have to do the request for pricing all through and do it like that. But we described what we needed, we had three good bids, they were almost the same money on all of them.
Within a couple of thousand.
Yeah. And just a lot of the stuff we did when we were working on this building, they were all up in that price range.
I think I'm good this way, my original thoughts for C was fifteen thousand, but now thinking about it, now that you're saying it, um, you don't get much for twenty thousand, to be honest with you.
And this was done way back at twenty fourteen?
Nine years ago.
Yeah. And just these last two years, after COVID, it really changed this huge, because the pricing just inflated on everything.
Right, before COVID, we were having some challenges too.
Yeah.
We are, Justin, we were having challenges, because some of the bids were coming in, in fact, um, uh, the, I, I almost feel like we, we may have artificially made artificial vision, which is prohibited, we gotta be vigilant of that, because, you know, if it comes in, it's eleven thousand. Well, if we break it, if it two, we'll pass, but we really shouldn't be even considering that, but we follow our policy.
Yeah.
Right. So this would allow us not to be doing that, I think.
All right, let's schedule the, we have to have a public hearing next week?
Seven days.
Where's your paperwork that you scheduled?
Right there, well, so this is the ever say for selectmen setting fees, okay? And then the reason why we have.
What did you highlight on here, Lena? Right here, selectmen setting fees.
Yeah.
This is not setting a fee.
Yeah, it is, according to the, uh, so we brought this to the vote of the people.
Yeah.
And, because it was initially brought to the vote of the people, but then we gave the selectmen the authority to update and change the fees through the, the.
And read that, and tell them.
See the town vote to amend the purchasing policy of the town passed by Board Article seven at town meeting two thousand and two to acquire all goods and services that aggregate, that aggregate or to more than five thousand annually by bid or qualification with selection process recorded, to also allow the board selecting to adjust the qualification total amounts to run in conjunction with the rate of inflation published by the US DOL. This policy will stay in effect until rescinded by the Board of the Board, which is correct, I understand.
It's by the Board of.
The Board of Selectmen, there's no public hearing required.
No public hearing required. When you're reading this chapter here, it says prior to the establishment of amended or such fees, the selectmen shall hold a public hearing for which at least seven days given. Now, when you read up here on the top, it's fees, talking about things like the fees we did at the dawn, and those times. We're not charging anybody fees from the town for those services.
Okay.
So this doesn't adhere to that. When you read that, it gives the selectmen the authority at that town vote.
Okay, so you're thinking that this vote tonight is adequate, and we can change it, okay?
I think, I feel comfortable.
I just want, I just want to make sure that we're.
Glad we, I'm glad we're reviewing it, so we gotta.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, until I read that language, you'd, you'd nicely highlight everything in there, so it's easy to read.
Yeah.
And I'm like, okay, they gave the authority to select at a town vote there.
Yeah.
And this here is for scheduling fees that the town charges.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion on the, uh, these proposed amounts?
No, I think that with inflation, I think that those amounts are good.
Can we read the motion, so I have it corrected from my.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to adjust the purchasing policy of the town of Dunbar, town of Dunbar. We are changing some par, uh, paragraph C of a policy, for purchases less than or equal to five, uh, equal or two five thousand dollars, it's now moved to seven thousand five hundred. Paragraph B, between five thousand and one and ten thousand, is moved to seven thousand five hundred and one and twenty thousand dollars. And paragraph C, over ten thousand, is now changed to over twenty thousand.
The only correction I have on Mike's amendment is he said C at the beginning, which was A.
A, I stand corrected, yes. So it was, that's more administrative.
I thought you were gonna read it backwards, like I.
I thought you'd.
You're getting me, getting me falling yours.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second that. Let's, any further discussion on that? I thought, again, it was a good review, just to review the, uh, have a moment to review the purchasing policy again. And, uh, so we're all good in that, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, next item up. Meeting schedule?
I'm trying to have calendars, because I wonder where they went.
For you.
Okay.
B, we're all on B now, right?
We're all on B, yeah.
And this one's gone, this one's gone, this one's gone.
People, so they go, schedule it, please.
New one?
Yes, it's gonna be new.
We're on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Today is the thirtieth. And if you stay on the schedule and make any changes to April.
Really, we're looking at April, because it starts in May.
Right, but the first of May is off, so we'd have to be on, off, on, off, people.
So the, so the sixth, we're not here anyway. So the sixth and the twentieth would be off?
Correct, yeah.
If that's, if this is the way the Board is.
I'm gonna grant it, it's out.
Well, that's next week.
Yeah, next week would be an off.
And then the week after that, we'd be on, then off again.
Yeah, and it'd be, yeah, Jack, uh, I mean, uh, Jack Rabbitting, just, we'll be a little week.
I'll make a motion that we adjust our schedule, then in April, the sixth and the twentieth, um, that we do not have a meeting.
Have a second. Okay, uh, any, a little bit of discussion, any discussion, or, gentlemen? I'm going, I reckon I'm against that, I think we should have made the change earlier in the year, we just haphazardly, I think we're doing it now, though it's well within the our same folk guidelines to change it, as we see fit. So, uh, I'll call for a vote now, all in favor?
Aye.
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 For the selectmen over.
Motion passes.
All right, I'll think for website, and.
That's good, Mike, we're not always supposed to all agree, right?
Well, I guess, um, I wish we would have, uh, come up with a schedule early in the year, but all of a sudden, you know, it's, we say it's not busy, but it could change, and we don't know, and the thing is, out of now, that I, I, what I wanna do is have a call a special meeting, because I don't wanna talk, take you away from bid, you guys are still working from me. I don't wanna have to call you in a, at a, so I say, an unscheduled, uh, nine o'clock popular time to conduct town business. Yes, I'm gonna be cautious of that. Yeah, well, like anything, we're always available, if we need to call a special meeting on our off week to do it again on Thursday.
Exactly.
I'm more than happy to, I just feel like our workload has lessened, and we have time to do that.
Can you call a, a meeting if you needed to, can you call a meeting if you're available to them, like on a Tuesday afternoon or something?
We can do it, we have.
So, you, you know, you're flexible.
As long as we publicly notice, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Moving on, okay, we have some, uh, some money for the help trust.
You can attach to an email from Donna White, or a letter from Donna White.
I have it right here. This is from Donna White, just like, and please accept this five hundred dollars to be allocated for upcoming campaigns, any purchases that are made for this purpose, we forward it to the office and be posted against these funds. The five hundred dollars may be used on discretion of wellness coordinator provided that purposes to fund or incentivize employee wellness. Some examples include, campaigns around healthy eating, physical activity, healthy work environment, lessening stress levels, and making healthier life choices. A minimum, a minimum of one bonus campaign is required each calendar year. I, she did this last year, as I recall, and it worked out well.
And she had remaining funds in December, and she decided to, uh, extend the the positive, um, discussion into December, and we kinda had a quasi-Christmas holiday feast, and I think everyone really enjoyed it, or attended.
And the, per ever say, thirty-one dash ninety-one ninety-five, some paragraph B, I make a motion to accept the five hundred dollars from the help trust to support the wellness campaign for town of Dunbar, please. I'll second that. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
By the way, the, the salmon meal was nice.
Yeah, it was, huh?
It was.
And she had.
So, you know, it's.
She accepted wellness too, but she had everyone listen to a, um, a brochure, or read a brochure to us, and then offered, um.
The diet side sandwiches.
All right, you've been doing that, you can, right? All right, now we're moving on to, um, uh, email from Woody at the table, Steve, I thought an email that you were gonna take care of that.
I did.
Okay.
But I thought I had a spot to put them in, um, Lena told me it's getting full where they were gonna go. And I tell you, that the chairs people thought were gonna be, you know, replaced upstairs and this and that, and now everybody's looking at these chairs, and they don't look so bad.
No, I think.
And so, they're, um, they're, um, wiping down this weekend, we're gonna save those chairs, and, um, I don't wanna lose the foresight with the tables, because they have five round tables down in our storage bin for up there for use, but if, um, if we get rid of them square tables, and we don't have replacement tables up there yet, I think we're doing a disjustice to the town, because most of those square tables are actually more rugged than those plastic tables.
Mm-hmm.
And so, even if I've gotta store them at my house, if the school needs to get rid of them, until we have room to put them someplace, I think we should do whatever we need to do to, to restore them.
What options we have, what are the options we have?
Fill both of those containers, pretty much, I haven't gone to them, but they tell us they're fully are.
Leo wants to bring those?
Yeah, right, okay, uh, but you probably use some awesome for old home day.
Um, yeah, I think eventually when they get the newer plastic ones, they wanna use those, because they're easier to lift and move and everything else, but the thing is, we don't have them right now.
But I mean, in the meantime, you can use them, you, you can always find use for a good table.
Right.
And all day, you got different committees might set up the table and things like that, you know?
So if they need to get them out there, if I need to store for, whatever we need to do, I, I think we need short sighted to throw them all out, so.
Will we have capacity with storage, should we look into just getting another twenty-foot container, I think Jeff will let us put it down with Town Rogers for that, and other things.
It would be nice, they're like four thousand.
Every time, yeah, if we buy it outright, or we can just rent it.
No, I think, I think buy it outright, because the rental, it's up there so much now, the rental adds up so quick that after a year or two.
That takes about four years to pay back.
Four thousand dollars.
It's over a hundred dollars a month to rent a twenty footer.
Not anymore.
It is where I am.
Where do you go?
Four.
We, we, how long will they, we estimate, where would they be stored after that, uh, after a certain period of time? Would you move back into the, to the.
Um.
Going in here?
I don't know, Mike, because they, they could be used up there.
How, how many we talked about?
There's probably ten. Kinda so.
You gonna, you foresee, you gonna need more storage in the future too, or, or as he said, maybe rent it till you get.
Leave it like, if you look up there, tonight we went up there, there's our regular chairs up there, the folding ones like this. There's some other miscellaneous things that I thought were good enough not to throw out, there's a, a bench for the piano, there's a second bench for the piano. There's a, a nice old, um, coat rack there that looked like it was really old. All of those things that look like they shouldn't be thrown in one of those things, I kept all up there. Some of those things will have a place in the corner or whatever up there, but other things, we might need, like Justin said, some storage room, like.
Even if we get a container, that, that one's dedicated for, for that building or something, I don't see if the, I think that's a pretty good.
Well, another thing like Leo mentioned, say old home day, tables are up there, right? Instead of wrecking our doors in the hallway and everything else, bumping those tables all the way down the stairs, old home day, use the storage tables out of the storage bin. You know, follow me there, so they're not, we don't wanna wreck that new thing, bringing stuff in and out, we've already brought enough stuff, and I've seen.
Already things up there already, yeah.
Already, so.
Up and down the stairs, you know?
Then people will wanna use the elevator to bring them up and down and all that stuff, so.
Storage container four grand versus renting it, that's forty months.
I think it's gonna be a little bit more than four grand, but I can get prices for the next meeting.
I think that was at the peak, and I'd probably like to use the same company only, try to keep the color somewhat, so I'm, there's a bunch of colors like an old farm down there.
All right, so the question is, does Jeff have room at the Town Rogers, more than likely, yes, but we gotta coordinate that with.
We're gonna have our get prices on, through different companies to see what the cost is.
Well, you did that on the last.
I don't know who it is.
Yeah. And you got the.
We just got, we just, we, in the last twelve months, within twelve months, we just.
Twenty feet is not that big, and we can fill that up real fast, so, for that extra thousand dollars. I mean, I know I rented a twenty footer and a forty footer, and it's like, why do you have?
Well, we already have a twenty down there.
Is it on there now?
Yeah, so I'd like to just put a twenty beside it.
Twenty, okay, twenty footer.
And a forty footer, it gets so deep that, like, there's stuff in the back you'd never go to.
Yeah.
I just feel like, I'd rather have more twenty footers, so the stuff just doesn't get piled deep and forgotten, you know what I mean?
All right, I'll get some prices for the next meeting.
Yeah.
I think two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Yes, that's good. I'm gonna agree with that.
All right, all right, good, because I feel like other meetings, where I said, oh, there's no more storage, there's no more storage, so. Well, the last, the thing is, if you're in the basement, we lost the storage for all the tanks and.
Can we do one of the, can we make a motion that if she can find it around the same price as we did last year?
Yeah, execute.
To execute, because we could get it in, so we could get those tables out of the school's way.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I think, I'll, I'll make a motion on, I'll make a motion allowing the ink code to exercise the option to make the purchase of, of, uh, such clinics.
What is the pricing, similar or close?
Similar or close, uh, allowing maybe a ten percent leeway in this preparation.
I think you're gonna find that those were peaked right about then, because of the, uh, COVID thing going on, and I think they might be down slightly now, or at least the same.
I'll second that. But, uh, discussion is, you can go up to ten percent more, like, ten percent more four thousand is like almost five hundred dollars more.
Yeah.
And I think she could, uh, is that enough, or should we allow it up to five thousand, we're in discussion phase? I think five thousand, I think five thousand.
I think we can, I think she's gonna find it though, for that.
Yeah, all right. But the thing is, I don't wanna have, it's like, forty-six hundred, they're up to for a couple of hundred dollars.
And if you can, if it's very similar, lean towards the same company, so they look the same color.
Right.
Okay, got it.
All right, are they all agreement?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks.
Well, can I raise that law, by this now? Could you give the Shelley at the school a call?
I don't know what.
And Woody a letter, know that we're gonna get another one in there, so.
Okay.
All right, next item, um, I guess, I saw the email from Woody this afternoon, he wants to go into tree business, and he's, uh, I think it's very honorable for him to expand it to allow residents, but the thing is, at that, when the, when brush gets more than five inches, it was more for brush. Five inches, he's talking about firewood almost.
And I think, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that, Mike, five inches is big, and above that, why are we handling, let the residents take care of something over five inches themselves, you know? Or they give it to a friend, or sell it, or whatever they do, I just think it's creating more work for them down there too, we don't need to create more work.
No, I, but I think it's, I, it's honorable that he's, he's watching out, but I think, I think we're on agreement, we'll defer that at this point.
I think, I think his, uh, only intention was because people aren't supposed to be burning anything over six inches, so he's trying to get them to bring it to the dump as opposed to be burning stuff, because if you can't get rid of it, people choose to burn it.
All right, and then the other.
But you know, it may have been his intention.
Does he handle all that wood that?
He's gonna, you know, second, he knows.
He's gonna pick it up, put it in the dumpster.
So he picks it up.
Yeah, it's an extra handling thing, he just can't throw it in that, in the burn.
And if you'll notice now, we're not burning, and I told him I wanted to cycle my burns, so that we didn't lose the ability to do that, because we hadn't done it in so long. But my feeling is, if we don't burn there once in a while, maybe once a month, and once every other month, and then you do burn, then we're gonna get all kinds of resident complaints, so I think we should continue the burn, so I'd like to make a note to Woody of that, we talked about that last year.
At least once a.
Once, once a month? No, once, 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 or, or once every other month, once every other month?
Yeah.
Okay. Just to keep that, okay, that is something we do do, because if you stop something, it's the hardest thing to get it going again.
And it's basically to have smaller burn titles, and then maybe less complaints of neighbors, that type of thing.
Yeah, I, no, nothing to say about that.
Yeah.
Let it burn, however much he wants, like he used to do, but I like it to burn.
To keep the, to keep the capability going.
And how much he burns, I don't care, as long as we keep that burning, because.
I agree, just.
I'm afraid to lose that.
All right, we're all good, we're all in agreement there. Okay, we have a few more appointment letters from the town clerk. Yeah, we just, uh, pull them out first. I have too many this time.
So, three?
Yeah.
Uh, so first, I'll make a motion to appoint, um, to, oh, wrong, get wrong order, sorry. Get wrong order, sorry. Uh, to appoint to the Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee, uh, Mary Sue Bracy. Term ending in March twenty twenty four. Kurt McDermott, term ending March twenty twenty four. So Cindy Lou Pennard, term ending March twenty twenty four. I'll second that. And call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, agreed.
And I also would like to make a motion, um, to plan board the alternate member. Dawn Stairs, term ending March twenty twenty six.
I'll second that. In discussion, do you have a bet, Dawn, yet?
Yes, I have.
She's had a good day?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, he came to our last meeting.
Tell him, thank you for volunteering. It's a tough committee to be on. It meets every month.
Yeah, he's very interested in running.
Okay. Which is background, may I ask?
I don't know.
Okay. Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That can be sent to town court, please.
Yeah, it's gonna be right now.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay. So the town program? Yes, we're gonna have a notification. But we're still participating. So it's gonna wait for Justin to sign.
I think you couldn't allow that number.
Yeah. Okay, next, David, can I continue?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, next item we have, we have an email, a reminder, it's a yearly reminder of your, of Dunbar's responsibilities of this state, this state community of the National Flood Insurance Program. And we've got a copy of the status, the current map and date is included in the attachment. I guess Dawn or this text, Dawn, why, if you can look at that, she's our representative there.
Yeah.
Uh, this is just a notification. I don't think there's any action required here.
No, she's already responded. We're, our knowledges to receive on the, uh.
Is that where we can let the floodgates open and flood Massachusetts? When they don't pay? The quote, previous selectmen who've, uh, who said, who was it? Was it last Saturday said that?
Yeah.
Gotta appreciate a sense of humor. Okay, we have a leave request from a town employee. Um, I have a problem to prove, just going to let you know. Just like why I said, where this?
Yep.
Okay, we just. Lee, did you do your extension for the rate to know?
I did, and she responded, so that was not an issue. I gave her a date for the end of May because I explained to her I have an audit and a vacation plan. For the month of April, and I would not be able to get through, um, any type of thorough research for her. She was okay with that.
Okay, um, this next item is, uh, the NHMA is putting on a, a seminar in person and virtual for a hard road travel. Justin, are you familiar with the book Hard Road Travel?
I know what it is, I've been writing the whole time.
The thing is, if, the thing is, the town would pay for it. If you're interested in going, it's a good education. I would. Date is a refresher. Date is on May seventeenth from nine AM to twelve thirty PM.
Yeah, she sent out the email, but I had, had a chance to read it today.
I'll read the whole, the email.
Today.
If you're interested, please let Lee know, but I think it'd be a.
This email just came in and I just thought.
It'd be a good overview of that, Hard Road Travel. It's not, Hard Road Travel is a, it's not a legal document, but basically they take the RSAs and put them into plain English.
Yeah.
And enhancement news for legal.
There's a lot of cases that they should, they use as examples.
But, but it makes it, especially in the planning board, it might be worthwhile, so I suggest that to you. Dave is your refresher.
Yeah. It's a great, well, I've learned a lot from you.
But if, if you do, just let Lee know and she can make sure she'll cover the cost of the registration.
Sometimes they'll provide you the copy of the hard road travel when you do sign up for them, but you don't have a copy of that, do you, Jason?
I think I do. I, this Bob gave it to me.
Oh, from, okay.
And my copy is, uh, with, I gave my first, yeah, bought in. Someone gave it to me. Dawn has my, Dawn has my copy.
Okay. They don't change very much, but if you're interested, it's good information to enroll and just let me know.
Okay.
That you've enrolled and we'll take, we'll talk to you later.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item is, uh, the town hall second use full policy. We, there's a draft out there. I said, I gave her some recommendations.
That's not on the agenda.
I don't know.
I can't talk about it.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
I'm trying.
Leo?
We're coming to propose here, Dave. We need to get this in place.
Thing is, um, there's a draft in front of us. Um, I used this as a draft. I, I, I went through, uh, many, many things in here and I thought we'd just talk about it. Do you wanna go through it as bullets and talk about each rule? I, I have no problem with doing that. Uh, I thought the first paragraph was fine. I think as a key word, exceptions to this policy may be considered by the board of selectmen. In other words, it's, we're gonna be flexible. We can read junk.
Yeah.
And, uh, I said town boards committees have first priority is the second floor being the space end of subject period. Um, the library space may be used for overflow, for any other, the second bullet would be, the library would be used for overflow, guest lectures, guest speakers, any, any, really, almost any town related activity. As a during hours of operation, only activities with no or low noise impact will be, will be permitted. That word, it's gotta be changed.
We'll take the grant.
Granted, yeah, granted permission, yeah.
Okay, permission?
Will be permitted, granted permission. Uh, prohibited activities would include but not limited to concerts, loud music, plays, anything that's gonna create a noise, uh, uh, as we saw this morning, uh, this afternoon. Mary's concerned about that. I, I, I feel for her. I don't, but the thing is, I don't wanna restrict it for a meeting of fifteen and twenty people. You can sit around a room and just have a meeting and talk, do some official business. I think, I think, um, how you have the Senate. Uh, the low noise impact will be granted or permitted. Uh, I don't think we need to put the, um, part in there about what will not be permitted. You know, because it's just not gonna be permitted anyway, like.
Right.
Okay.
I'm just trying to shorten up the bullet point.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think so, it's.
Discreet strike prohibited activities.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hold on, read out, because I don't think we need, we're not gonna allow it anyways.
Right, okay.
Great.
And then.
Exceptions, okay. One other thing on the first bullet point.
Yeah.
The library may uses. Do we need to put anything on there in reference to when no other functions are, are happening there?
I think it, I think it talks about it a little bit more further into the policy.
I know, it says the library may use the space when overflow.
I would say we strike that whole bullet. There's a thing, is there, there's a town organization, the library is a town, is a town entity. They, they have priority in use of that, because it's a town activity.
If I think that, most of what was put up there so that Mary can go up there with it, if nobody else is using it, she can bring a story reading up there. Would I have no problem with that?
Right. So how do you wanna change it?
I don't think she should have priority if somebody are.
No, not priority.
I know, but that's a he, that's a might just.
Like, as far as priorities, it's a town activity where the thing is, it's a town activity, where, excuse me. It's a, library is an official function of the town, versus, let's say the Boy Scouts. Mary would have priority for her, her, uh, her, let's say, guest speaker.
And what it should say.
Unless the Boy Scouts have pre.
Right.
Pre-reserved.
When it's not been reserved.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say.
When not reserved.
When not, when no reservation is, is.
When not reserved previously.
Okay.
Just so she can be like, oh, yeah, I want this.
Agreed, totally agree.
When not.
Most of the time. Reserved, yeah.
Previously.
I mean, if you just ended with reserved, but not reserved.
Con.
She'll have to check with me or the office.
Yeah.
To say, has anybody reserved it? No, then she'll.
If she, if she's playing a bigger function like that against speaker or something.
She's gonna have big.
She's gonna have to reserve it as well.
Like anyone I know, okay, sorry.
Well, then, oh, before it's overflow. What I think she may do is like, it's library hours. She knows it's quiet hours. Nobody's really poking at those hours. She might take a reading class of a group of kids sixteen or whatever, bring them upstairs, because it's more open.
And allow, allow the patrons to be at quiet.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, that's good.
Once during the third, will you?
Any except, well, if town organizations may use, are you down that one?
No, I'm, any exceptions?
To this policy has to be determined by the board of selectmen at our sequence meeting or through the town administration or regular business hours. I was gonna put Dean's telephone number out, but I was gonna give her a call, but she said she didn't want that.
Yep, getting rid of the library and one of that last one.
Correct.
Okay.
Town organizations may use the space, organizational means of function, such groups, example, those are not limited.
Such groups include, but I don't know what you're doing.
So my question, can we go back to, what about any exceptions?
Yeah, sure.
I think we should leave it up to the board of selectmen at the meeting, because, and so there's more than one person making the decision on what's accepted.
Yeah, unless it's, unless it's included here, I'm good with that. Any exceptions to this limitation that would be determined by the board of selectmen at the selectmen's meeting?
Okay, my only concern is if you're meeting every other week, what happens if somebody comes up the week before and wants to reserve it and?
If it's an exception to what's in this policy, then they need to wait for our meeting.
Okay.
Or should we?
We shouldn't be doing it.
Last minute, last minute.
Two minutes.
Okay, got it, okay.
That's fine.
Agreed, agreed.
So just.
Just scratch it out.
After that.
Meeting period.
And you won't get flack about, oh, you let this person do it, but not this person. At least three of us would make the decision.
Okay, sounds good.
And take the arrows.
Yeah, exactly. We're good at it.
Yeah. Thing is, I took the word open to the public out there, but some organizations are not open to the public. For example, American Legion. If you're not American Legion, it's not open to the public. American Legion, you gotta remember to go to the meetings. That was kind of this worry. And I think it's used for ongoing space. The thing is, um, you know, I'm sorry, but the thing is, Arts on the Common Memorial Day and Old Home Day. Why do we close, we close this building for one reason on Old Home Day. We don't wanna have a thousand people coming in here using the restroom facilities. And we use porta potties for that reason. If you use a thousand people using the restroom facilities, what happens to the, the septic system? The same septic system serves the library. So again, I don't want that building open during Old Home Day for public use.
Well, the other thing is, we've had, um, Arts on the Common on rainy days, and people have been up there with wet, mighty shoes and, you know, that new floor upstairs is not gonna last long. I will, I will make a note that Arts on the Common had that stage out there, which I think works well. But their whole expectation, and they made a point of it at last year's Arts on the Common out there, right on the stage. They said in next year, we'll be up in an air conditioned space. Well, it's not air conditioned for one.
Right, but.
But they plan on not having that stage and being up on that stage. And that's my take on what I read that day by what they said on the stage without asking us, but. My thought is, if town common uses that to do those, what'd they call that play, stuff they did, um, they did like, uh.
Talent show.
Talent show. If they use it for a talent show, like saying from two to four. That hall could be open from two to four. Open the upstairs, the library's closed. People could use those restrooms because they are public restrooms just during that time. And at four o'clock, it'd be closed back down, my thought. But the bathrooms out here, I did tell them, always need to be provided because, like Mike said. During the regular part of the day, the doors will be locked on this building and that one. But if they did the talent show from two to four up there, to me, it's not the end of the world. It isn't.
Yeah.
A public building.
And that's kind of a controlled, uh, thing going on.
Right.
So it's not like it's a free fall for the day.
Yes.
So, so somebody will be paying attention for two hours. Like you said, it's a two hours, they'll be paying attention to what's going on.
So like Mike said, that could be an exception where they come in front of us and we say, okay.
We will have to negotiate, we have to negotiate this. I, I have no problem with negotiating like that.
I just know from what I heard last year, when they were telling people it's gonna be air conditioned, like, guys, do it. There's no air conditioning.
Yeah, okay. Alright, let's continue on. We're just, I think we've ju- ju- adjusted bullet three, bullet four.
Yep.
Bullet four is okay.
Wait, bullet four, that's.
And the rest of the stuff I, I struck out because, uh, one thing is, um.
Let's just read, just so I know, just go using this, which is to ourselves. Now, underneath the fourth bullet point, there's that paragraph about uses such as, um, citizens of Dunbar for craft, ears, moving, I have stuff that benefits townspeople. Why did we pull that out?
Because that's a, that's a, it could be a group, it could be, it could be anything for the public. Such groups are not limited to town organizations, a space for functional functions, but the thing is, it's just like, we can't list everything.
It's redundant. He said, he took it out because it was redundant.
Where, where do you have that? Love you up here?
Yes, well, we have all these organizations, as in, those are just some groups I include but not limited to. Historical awareness, historical society, American Legion, Dunbar church groups.
Four H.
Four H. Again, all those other concerts, we have concert area in there, recitals, community plays, dances, et cetera. Why do we have to say all of it again? I'm not, I'm not taking it away, I'm as, including the upper paragraph.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And like the Dunbar Elementary School, same thing. They can use it, but again, that's a, that's a, that's a town organization.
It's the elementary school above.
It says Dunbar School, that's.
Right, okay, good. Yeah, what, what I'm trying to do is shrink it down so it has to be that, that's.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Long dog would better than people who actually agree with it.
Exactly. And then the churches, I, I read the whole paragraph about churches, special, just, I just said, um, I got it. I struck it all down. I said church groups, Dunbar church groups. Three, three words, I took a whole paragraph out.
What did you do?
In other words, if you look here, uh, no, if you look here, this whole paragraph would be made possible, the homeschools and Dunbar Congregation and Saint John's Churches. I just took all of that about churches. I just put Dunbar church groups in there as one of the groups.
Oh, so you put it up top?
Yeah.
And what was free to charge high line?
Um, we're gonna talk about that next page.
Okay. We're moving into since, right?
Okay, since there may be comics, discussion, all corporates, borough partners expected in an event of, because there's a lot of, we're gonna town board, community group town will take presence, of course.
I think that's a good bullet to leave.
Yep. Now, look at the next bullet. This is where I, I anguished. I had huge fees I was going for, like, remember I was thinking fifty, sixty dollars at one point? And then I said, you know, Dave said, you know, taxpayers, uh, they want something for what they get, and, and the thing, so I came up with just a simple fee to help offset maintenance of. The place. A non-refundable fee of twenty five dollars will be assessed to all non-governmental organizations slash groups using the second floor. Simple, and, and, it's very simple. In large parties, more than fifty anticipated participants will need to pay a refundable secret deposit as far as a non, as well as a non-refundable custodian fee up to twenty five dollars. The thing is. If you paid a hundred dollars or had a check given to Lee for a hundred dollars, that's when, I, I'm not really sure we wanna do that, but I wanna at least start with a twenty five dollars non-refundable fee for using the second floor. Just one fee for all groups. I, I've counted down, remember I was going for.
Non-governmental.
For non-governmental. In other words, if it's, if it's, uh, like Dunbar, it's like the men's coffee, that's part of the library, they don't wanna pay a dime. If it's like the, like the Dunbar, uh, whatever, give me another time, like energy committee, you wanna be up there, they don't pay anything. All those related committees related to the town wanna pay anything.
And then green highlighted was down in the paragraph, froze down, we just moved it up to be in line with the discussion.
The thing is, do we, I don't, I don't mind taking the large parties out of there, because if they screw it up, we're gonna hear about it, we'll, we'll, that will never, it'll be the first and last time they use it. But I think the one, twenty, a twenty five dollar, uh, skin of the game type thing is not to make it pay for all the cleaning, it's to offset some expenses. And, and I really compromised Dave because I didn't want zero and I cut it down from about a fifty to sixty, even a hundred. I was, the thing is, I don't wanna make an administrative nightmare for the.
Just trying to take the groups that were, that are applied, some Boy Scouts, Girls Scouts, something like that.
American Legion, Dunbar church groups, garden club, four H, not the fire department, not the Dunbar school, community plays and concerts that is not related to the school. Um, Dunbar, uh, but Dunbar, one, historical awareness is town related, historical society is not currently.
Right, right.
So one would pay, one would not.
I'm gonna go on record and say that I want it to be zero. The reason I want it to be zero is because we're starting to divide large parties from small parties. That room will fill so many people.
Well, I, that's where.
Parties in size.
Right, that's where I'm willing to take the party size out of the information, just leave twenty five dollars across the board. Like any, you get a building, you're gonna get restroom facilities, you're gonna get electricity, you're gonna get heat in the winter. Uh, you're gonna get a nice quiet space to use, you can parking for your, for the patrons, then charge twenty five dollars, I think is reasonable. And it's not, it's not to, not to cover the cost, it's gonna help cover some of the costs of cleaning, but it won't cover the full cost.
I'm gonna say that those ones that we're allowing to use that room right now are doing something for the betterment of Dunbar. Whether it's four H for our kids, whether it's Boy Scouts for our kids, every one of those ones that we're allowing to use that room is doing something. is doing something to better the town of Dunbar by making it a better community, and I don't think we should be charging anything. If that becomes a need where we find that we can't keep up with the maintenance, I think next year, we should take a hard look at it, but I don't think we should charge anything, and that's just where I'm gonna stick with it, however we vote, we vote.
Okay, Justin.
I'm in the same boat, I really don't think we should be charging for something that's a benefit to the town, you know, the citizens of Dunbar, but, you know, most of the Boy Scouts, I mean, most of the families are gonna be from in town, yeah, the cleaning's gonna be paid through taxes, so I just don't feel like the twenty-five dollars, I just don't feel like we should be doing that.
I, I wanna re, okay, anything else? Okay, I, I'd like to remind that, the thing is, this was not a popular, um, uh, project in town, we have many citizens who are against it. And what you're doing is basically, we're not even offsetting some of it.
What are you talking about?
This wasn't popular. This wasn't popular in town.
This had probably four people or five people on the taglet voting against it.
Uh, but the thing is, um.
You remember during the town.
During the town meeting, yes, town meeting was limited government at that time, you know, the thing is, we only had, uh, votes, maybe ten percent of the, uh, voting population, maybe two hundred people there. Ten percent of the voting population. Things I, I.
We never had more than about fifteen percent of the voting population in regardless.
I'm not, I'm not debating that, but the thing is, I've heard from, from, uh, numerous, uh, residents, that we wasted our money here, they shouldn't be doing that, and I'm talking about a lot of people I ran into. And to include some town officials who basically, uh, rename, unnamed, this, not this ruling. Um, uh, but I don't wanna go data around, she has nothing to do, she's kicking, she's remained completely neutral to this process, but I've had some people come up to me and says, we're wasting the town payers, taxpayers' money on this, and a lot of people were, and I'm sensitive to that. And the thing is, they're, they're probably never gonna use that.
You're always gonna get groups that never use it, like I guess, I don't know, you know, we don't charge people if they come in to use this room, they didn't charge you at the school, or you use that room.
But the thing is, but at the same time, at the same time, it costs us to maintain that. And at the transfer station, it costs us to get rid of trash, but we charge people down there, but we don't say, well, your taxpayer, we're gonna, we should cover it all, I mean, wh- where's the point that we say, uh, we have to, we all have, uh, some people pay for, um, pub, to pick up, to have the trash picked up, for example. And then, then they also have to pay for, um, the fact that, uh.
I've been wondering that.
Exactly, the thing is, um, and then we charge them for, why aren't we paying for disposal refrigerator, we have to, I have to pay for that. Why don't we, I, I have to pay for, uh, construction debris, I have to pay for that, why are we not giving that free? Everyone does work around the house and have to pay for a construction debris.
Well, your construction debris is no benefit to the town.
Sure it does, and I don't put it on the side of the road. Okay, I think, obviously, I, my point is not gonna, we overrule here, but I just thought, I'd say my piece, and, uh, I'm going on record that I think it's, uh, it's, I don't wanna become a money, a total money pit for the town citizens of Dunbar.
I think we should put back in there, that if an organization wishes to make a contributing, contribution to the town as a result of its room use, the donation would be much appreciated, and use to help, refrain utility and clean costs, and that should stay.
That was.
And so long it's exed out in regards to the fee that people proposed.
If an organization wished to make a contribution to the town as a result of the room use, the donation would be much appreciated, reuse to help refrain utility and clean costs. That, that isn't a bad statement.
I, I guarantee you, well, I, I'd be pleasantly surprised if someone donated money like that.
Actually, um, and the last, the last sentence, the check should be made out of town of Dunbar with a note, face checking the town all use. I think that, that law should stay in with that top line.
Okay. So, I, I guess, uh, your two gentlemen definitely get safety fees?
I don't know, you know, maybe after, if I see a lot of use there and it's not getting treated right, I'll change my mind like that next year and go back to doing something.
If I see some abuse and some huge cleaning costs that we need to take on, I'll change my mind, but.
All right.
I think most of those groups that we've listed down here are very respectable groups within the town, and I think they're gonna do the best they can to keep it clean.
Okay.
Well, I just, just for saying, watching the cleaning crew that would come in and clean my office, I always got complaints when the four H left the meeting room.
This one?
Yeah. And, and you're working with kids, and you're working with, you know, seniors, doing a good thing to put these kids together, but the cleaning involved behind it, it was a lot of extra work.
And I think if that happens during that year, we need to have them in front of our select board.
It's gonna be long documented. Or we can send them to other, have her draft a letter.
And I do like what you said last week, Mike, about having each group come to the select board to start with, that way we get them all off to the same page.
Right, okay.
And them in front of the.
All right, well, the thing is, obviously, we're not gonna use a, uh, refundable fee, I'll live with that, I'll be a dissent against that, but the thing is, obviously, I'm gonna, uh, yield to the, uh, majority here. And we're just, as I said, it's a living document, we'll just see how it goes.
Are you okay with keeping those two sentences in there, Mike?
Oh, yeah, I have no problem.
So the top one is strike out, we're gonna leave, and then we're gonna put back in, check should be made out, because that ties into the person.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and let's continue on, reserve in the second floor, uh, again, we all agreed last, I was talking about in the past, it's not gonna be done by email, it's gonna be done in person. And I think it's at least seven days prior to the event. And now, however, however, we do have an exception, always exception.
Okay, on this sentence that you left in there, uh, it still says online, so you wanna make sure that gets passed out.
Online. Point noted, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, drop-ins on short notice.
Oh, yes, I'll get that across.
I'm good with you. Drop-ins on short notice may be accommodated after appropriate paperwork is provided, knowledge in the town office during normal business hours. And before the, make it, before the select, in other words, uh, if, if they came in like, uh, like Thursday night, talked to us, and they wanted the reserve for Saturday night, we could, we may allow it, but that's our prerogative at that point.
Do you want everyone to come before the selection initially to get?
Yes.
Hold on, I've got three emails.
I don't know if it's on here, but we should talk, really talk about getting that list together of, you know.
Yeah, once you have this bullet list, and they come in, you hand it to them and say, now, on, on your initial visit, you've gotta come before the selection, at their next regularly scheduled meeting. And, um.
Right, okay, um, continuing on, let me see, reservations maybe, I, I thought ninety days was, was in there, I thought those could, anything before ninety days, I, I think it's, uh.
Hey, can we shorten that up a little, like, drop-ins on short notice may be accommodated, casually proposed, fulfilled, acknowledged at the town office.
No, I think just maybe accommodated, period. In other words, if they came in, Lee would give, Lee would tell them what the needs are due. Because a- anyone has to fill the paperwork, that has no bearing on it, whether or not.
And I think we just have to.
Right, okay, so get rid of, after appropriate paperwork has been.
Right, so afterward accommodated, period, and delete all afterwards.
But they have to know what to.
Great, they, they. They're gonna have to come in and see us anyways.
Drop-ins and short notice may be accommodated. And acknowledged at the town offices during normal business hours. Yeah, that's fine. I don't care if you leave the paperwork part any.
The paperwork is regarded.
Okay, reservations may not be made earlier than ninety days before requesting, we won't stick with that.
But the thing is, there's an exception to that, if you.
Right, but I think we should shorten the exception up too.
Right.
And just put, um, except with select's approval or something.
Right, in the sense that events involving significant planning, reservations may be made prior to ninety days with the second approval at the, at the regular scheduled meeting, we have that in there.
Okay, then scratch that first sentence then.
Drop it.
Drop the first sentence.
Drop the first sentence.
Reservations may not be made, just get rid of it and say, for events involving significant event, cleaning, reservations may be made. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think so. Events is one exception. Okay, now, what about the, uh, local groups can be regularly?
In other words, such as the garden club, the garden club has a regular scheduled monthly meeting, they can pencil, we can pencil in. If there's a conflict, we have town administration calls, and we get conflict, there's a major town meeting going on, we have to have a public hearing or something.
Now, wait a second, we're doing the ninety day thing just above that, and then we're putting local groups that meet regularly. May be given the privilege of reserving a room at specific.
That's, I haven't yelled for the reason, I don't know where to go with that, I was thinking that, say, the garden club, do we let them do three months at a time, or do you let them go more than that?
I think do the three months in a try, and then.
Three months, and then they just do the maximum.
Okay, I'm in favor of that.
So we'll scratch that out?
Yeah, there was, I don't want someone to go, whole year, we're coming in, we're gonna have a whole year of reserve in front of you.
Because we don't know what comes up on our schedule either.
And maybe after this year goes on, maybe we make it easier, and we can.
Yeah, because no one's, we find that it's not being used as often as we thought it would, and we've got the, just the regular, uh, groups.
And this is a reminder, priority will be first come, first served, however, town and, town and school related items are priority over community, uh, followed by community events, which is appropriate.
Isn't that given somewhere?
If it is, we can scratch that.
Cause town boards and the many's have first priority in this.
Yeah, why don't we just scratch that?
Okay.
We'll spare several.
Yep. Now, the thing is in green, uh, if you notice, I have lost key and cost to replace, in other words, there's two ways to get in there, there's gonna be a key, and Justin said a key box, and I'm looking at that, I wasn't sure which way we wanna go, but I bring it up, we have a keypad, which will be provided, will be provided for the, uh, for the responsible person, open and close the building. However, the key must be locked, okay, let's talk about the key.
Can I just interject one, just one second?
Sure.
I recorded before the whole thing's getting struck out.
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it.
It was in green, but that was a question mark in my mind too.
Yep.
And this blue green here, lost key, cost to replace a key in the lock box, let's.
Well, keys are cheap, we're gonna spare them.
Okay, yes.
So not too much worry about keys, we'll have plenty of them, but, um, and, and just so you know, I had a keypad on that front door.
No, I knew, you told the story, there's keypad inside.
Yeah.
So the thing is, they get issued a code, which was like, which will change after twenty-four hours, I mean, after the event, right?
That's not an issue.
Okay, so, so the thing is, the, the key to get in, Justin suggested the last time, maybe like a key box.
Maybe a key box that stays on the building.
Right.
Can you just tell the person the code, and do, 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 press the code, they get the key for the door, but we, then we do have to think about if that person doesn't put the key back. Someone, the next person will have to come back to lean.
Yeah.
So we either have to check on the key.
Well, the only thing that too, is when they've done an event, if they bring that key back to lean, she loves several of them, but if they bring it back, it's like, okay, we're done now, the next business station's.
That's the alternative, that's the alternative, and I think that's a good idea too.
I forgot to look at the, uh, the exit of that door, is there a push bar?
There's a little, there's a little.
There is a, a whole open thing for the day.
Right, so that's what I was hoping that.
Now, when you, when you unlock that door also.
Yeah.
Until you lock it back up, you can just turn the knob and open it, just like it's, and, and you can do the keypad thing on there too, so. Um, either way, you can do that. Either way, you can do that door there.
You don't have the keypad, are you talking about the crash, or?
That's the crash sign on the inside, if you turn the key on the outside, and you don't re-lock, it stays unlocked, so you just turn the left.
Just like when we're leaving, so you don't need to turn around and unlock.
Okay, so, the thing is, the thing is, they'd have to, they'd have to stop by the office after the event, turn the key back in, ne- the next business day, business day. So.
It's kind of a way she's getting the key back, and so it's all cleaned up there, right? You know, that's what I would do if I was getting the key back, and then somebody's saying, yeah, it is, suddenly did a great job.
Should we do a sign out sheet, like, so we know who has the key?
Tell, tell.
You know, I know, the keys won't be numbered, but at least we'll say, okay.
We can number, we can number.
Justin always has the key here, you know?
Yeah, I think we, we number and stamp them when you get them made, you have them stamped, it's no problem. How many keys you wanna, how many master keys you wanna make?
So we don't have a ton of keys out there, you know?
The front entrance key, I don't know, it's probably gonna give lean sticks or something.
Okay.
I know John he probably very needs one.
Well, I, I just over the last five years or so, I've gone through numerous front entrance keys, because at, in the beginning, they're really good about making sure they get the keys back, and then they repeat and use it and come back.
That's why he has a chart there, it gets checked off when they bring them back.
Yeah. I mean, check in, uh, so, so we have a deployment sheet that I've been working on, but do the same thing for the key, key, key in, key out.
Yeah, we'll just have it in the same line, key was taken, check, key brought back, check.
Yeah.
With a number and the, the.
They're more than even first.
Yeah, and then you can say, where's the key, how come you haven't brought it back, it's been two weeks.
See, that's, and that's where I was going, cost to replace, Dave, yeah, the keys are cheap, but the thing is, uh, we have too many keys holding out there.
Yeah, well, you gotta also think that it's not gonna be a master key, it's gonna be just for that one lock.
My door, yeah.
I have a lot of keys.
We've got a couple, we've got a couple bucks. All right, I'm not worried about the deposit of the key, I just remember a deposit key, some, some companies charge, you lose the key, they charge like a hundred bucks for a key replacement.
Yeah, so I think we definitely should put a sign out sheet or something, so you have an idea who has one.
We could put enough down the bottom, your lost keys will cost you five bucks, I don't care, I don't.
Twenty-five dollars, maybe worth a while.
I mean, five, you can put a five dollar lost key, and that's, that's fine.
No, five dollars, don't I say, I'd lose the key, because I, I don't wanna come in.
You'll be getting five dollars out of it.
Then you'll always have your key, right?
Yes. Maybe, you gotta make it hurt, I'd say no fee at this point, just the, let's see how it goes for you, as we said.
See how it goes for you.
I'm around. Next year, we'll be hammering hard, like, two hundred dollar key deposit.
Next year, earlier, I told you.
Can we put something about, uh, let's see.
Where are we, we're done by the primary.
Advocate is responsible for opening, closing building and being present of all functions, how about returning the key, just that statement there, saying.
Yeah. Right.
We need, the appointed town employee will be friendly with. That's not the town employee, we don't need that.
No, the, the point is.
Just put the town administration.
No, wait, on the paragraph, it's meaning the people, not the, the appointed.
No, it's just a, um, the town, it could be anyone in Lee's office, will provide a keypad code for the key, or it could be lean, or it could be, it could be anyone in her office. Provide a keypad code for the keypad.
So a town employee.
A, yeah.
A.
Yeah.
Town employee will provide a keypad code for the keypad lock prior to the scheduled event.
Provide, a key, a keypad code and entry door key. Entry door key. Right?
Let's put, let's put that before, will provide entry door key, cause they're gonna use that one first.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Key.
And the keypad code for the interior door, well, just for the, in the keypad code, for the keypad lock, perhaps this case, but, okay, that's fine.
The advocate is responsible for opening, closing the building and being present at all functions.
And finally, and finally returning, and finally, and additionally returning the key.
The building must be locked when the group leaves, except during business hours. Key must be returned to town office on the next business day.
Yeah, but, yeah, but you're gonna want them to lock the upstairs, make sure the second floor.
That's gonna lock automatic, they don't have the hold open.
Okay, fire, turn that.
Do you have the language you ever need?
Key must be returned to twenty-four, uh, next business day.
Friday, you know, Saturday, they come in Monday.
You could put, key must be returned same day slash next business day, cause if the event's during the day, you aren't right back. Uh, just so you guys know the function of those, the door's going into marriage rooms, and the door's going into upstairs. There's a hole there, like somebody could stick something in for a hold open to those devices.
Right.
Because those are fire reading walls, there's nothing in there, there's no guts to hold that door open. So, if those little hold opens, aren't putting up top up there, and those doors close, you have to have the code to get in, all right? And when you're exiting, obviously, that crash bar, so both exits.
So the thing is, what are they gonna do during, so many of these.
Yeah, they go to bathroom.
They're gonna have to have a door mayor?
No, there's a, a code that you can put in while you're there, that is a passage function.
It stays open for.
Like one, right now, one, two, three, four is a passage function, so if you punch in one, two, three, four, that will open and stay open during your thing. All right?
And, but that's one given, when they, when you're in a passage function, when they open it.
Right. Okay, and then is the passage code timed?
If you hit it again, what, well, we're gonna change them, that's why, she can change them on her, on her thing.
That's the, that, I mean, right there.
Yeah. So they could use their code to get in.
Yeah.
And then hit the one, two, three, four, that's in the passage function.
And it goes, it's back to lock.
Yeah. And so, we can get that smart hop, so they can all be done, um, off a laptop or whatever she wants to do.
And we just agreed that the physical key will return the next business day.
We'll add that to the end though.
Yeah, very good. Like, at the end, they say the, 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 the physical exterior key, we'll go, remember.
And I'll make sure the commercial door guy provides sufficient keys, he already did some, but I'll get a few more. And I'll make sure the commercial door guy provides sufficient keys. He already did some, but I'll get a few more to have.
Okay, um, the, the next one is some general policies for the, uh, for the, uh, just general policies.
Now, do you wanna?
You see, I had two hundred, two fifty. The thing is, I was wanting, I wanna get a readout, I wanna get John to give a recommendation. You know what I'm saying?
Let me go to, okay, to that. So the main room at seven, seven square feet per person holds two twenty-five.
Okay.
The stage holds twenty-five fifteen square feet per person.
Okay.
On a stage, cause you're moving.
Yeah.
They give you more square footage. So the whole room capacity is two fifty, but I thought we should do it much lower than that to see how it goes to start. I'm thinking like one fifty or so.
Yeah, for the first year, see how it goes. Thing is, we got, uh.
Unless we use that for town voting or something to that effect, when we possibly could get two hundred throughout a day, then I think that we should leave it at one fifty-ish to start.
Right.
So change the occupancy of, right there to one fifty.
That was my.
And, and I can't think of any board or any function after that's gonna have over a hundred and fifty people.
Yeah.
So, I think let's put one fifty on that to start and then.
We address.
But just so you know, the occupancy, that was adjusted by Eric.
Yeah, and what I'd like to do is develop, and I think I've got some samples from these other towns, that they have to complete, that tells us what kind of event it is, how many people, and they expect to, that will attend, and then how.
That'll, that'll help us when we, when we're talking to them too.
So I'll tell you what, why don't you make a rough draft of that for our next selectments meeting, and then we can fight to that.
Okay.
All right, so let's go with Russell.
Okay, tenants, okay, individual, we're held responsible, accident. Thing is, I, I had willful or accidental damage, in other words. The key word, accidental, you're gonna hold someone liable for accidental damage? Uh, all right, they break a window, they smash something to a window, we gonna make them pay for the window? It was an accident.
We do when they hit something at the transfer station, the walls.
I see any individual group or organization, except for will be held responsible for willful or accidental damage, regardless of caused by the group organization.
I just gotta keep.
Members or those attending that's pro.
I had a, I had a hard time with accidental, because accidents do happen.
They do, but at least if we can, if we leave it in there, get some thinking.
Okay, you know, they're gonna.
They're gonna bring it, I know, but like, they shouldn't be thrown, they shouldn't be thrown.
But kids, kids are kids.
Yeah, I know.
And the thing is, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hold that boy scouts association, and you gotta replace the window now.
And if they do, yeah, because we should hold them too at that board, that group. Instead of the twenty-five dollar fee, I don't mind making them pay for something that they break. If they admit doing it, of course.
Yeah.
You are gonna allow groups in here, what happens when they drop a coffee cup in their machine, they don't have to pay?
Yeah.
You understand?
Right, okay, I, I, I bring it up for discussion. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, I just wanted to bring it up.
I like it.
Okay, leave it, all right. I think the next one is, I think it was, uh.
Also declared including children.
Yeah. Okay, in other words, uh, they just got, they, they're responsible for their own setup. The next item on the next page, smoking is not permitted, alcohol consumption is not allowed, except by special permission of the board of selectmen. What's the special permission we're gonna give for alcohol, by the way? I just wanna know.
Well, I thought, no, not, not so much a wedding, cause we're not allowed to negotiate, but I thought if you did a toast for somebody, like you were saying, you actually the one that brought it up at the.
Right.
If you did a toast for somebody, whether it's a retirement party, or whatever it is, and you wanted to allow a toast of, let's say champagne, I think it's by our permission only.
Okay, leave it, just leave it as such, okay?
Just throw it out there, okay?
Groups are responsible, leave the, no items will be taped, tackled, or otherwise affixed to, uh, walls. There's an exception, you're gonna have a court board there, I thought, on one side, right? But that's more of an bowling board.
I was gonna, but they shoot rocked it too.
I know, so.
I mean, we could put a cork over that in a section.
Yeah.
It might not hurt.
But the thing is, an organization's not gonna put it, uh, before notices or anything, but not, not.
I think you leave it, just like you have, no items should be taped, tacked, or otherwise affixed to walls, because we just pay to have all the walls done, so.
Food and beverages may be served, that's, I had a problem with food and beverages being served, and the thing is, um. Let's talk about men's coffee. Men's coffee has, they usually have a coffee, sometimes they have a, bring your own coffee in, sometimes they have a coffee urn, sometimes they bring pa- pastries in and all that kinda stuff. But that's, that's, I think that's fine. But I think, I don't think you should be having, bringing a hot plate up there and making eggs to order.
No, but I'm thinking like, if they have cupcakes for the boy scouts, or some, the girl scouts, or whatever it is. That would be okay, as long as that group planes up afterwards.
Right, uh, and so for food, I was gonna say, um, what was the word? Not pre-made, but I think it's, uh. Not fast, not fast food, that's a word, I think it's, uh.
Animal items?
No, but food. I put, not, well, I leave it as such, but I think it's, it's not, there's no cooking to be involved there.
I think we need to make that discretion when they apply for that.
Okay.
Uh.
But.
Food and beverages may be served, but it's, I think food and beverages may be served, I mean, it's just your thing of saying the pastries, I mean, that's a food item.
Right, but the thing is, uh, let's say, uh, cup, uh, we're gonna set the table, it's gonna have, have a ham and beans up up there, but make some money for, for charity.
Yeah, historical society would.
That's historical society.
You could put prepared foods.
That's the word, that's the word, prepared foods. What do you think, Dave? Prepared foods?
Sure. Wanna make coffee up here though.
Right, right. But, pre- prepared food.
Prepared, right at the beginning?
Yes.
Yeah, prepared food and beverages may be served. Cause beverages, it doesn't say whether it's prepared or not, so they could make the coffee.
If you want, it's true. Okay, and then, uh, uh, Lena, I thought she, she liked to carry and carry out policy, uh, tra- policy. The trash picked up, you carry it in, you carry it out.
Now, speaking of that, well, well, that I was gonna bring it up later anyway, what I'd like to do, in Joe Marie and Dulmary, get Woody to get them. I'd like to do two of those thirty-five gallon gray trash buckets with the covers. On the rolling wheels.
You sure that's gonna screw up the floor?
No, cause if you don't put them on the rolling wheels, it will screw up the floor.
More so.
Yes, and the reason why is, cause I want, if people want to roll to the front of the room or the back of the room, or leave them in the hallway, and I'm gonna take it, we're gonna cut a hole in one for recycling. And then we'll leave the other one. So even though they're carrying them, carrying them out, we're providing a can for them, and we can provide bags for them.
I agree with that.
Just so that we make sure. We'll leave it carry and carry out, but we'll provide two containers for them. Cause otherwise, we need to have a bag on the floor and leaking and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, two thirty-five gallon containers with lids.
Yep, the heavy duty gray ones.
Rubbermaid, rubber, rubbermaid, yeah.
Like not, not cheap ones, the heavy duty ones, and they have a, a little thing that rolls on the ground at the bottom, the can sits right there, perfect.
Yeah, it's a.
Dolly.
Dolly, it's a can dolly for the carts.
So we'll do two of those and, um.
I don't, I don't know if you didn't wanna make one for recycling, just to have two carts, I think two carts.
Just to enter the stuff the wood uses. It'll be done already.
Yeah.
One thing we do. Yeah, there's only two of them.
All right, all right. But I, I think trash bags should be available.
Um, and the other thing I'd like to do, while we're on the cleaning stuff, because this is what they used to do in those, um, I, I should show them to you tonight, but. The two old brooms that are up to this wide, they've been a hundred years old, let's get instead of two footers, let's get three footers, okay?
Like dustmobs?
Dustmobs.
Yeah. You know what they are? They have the fringes on the edge there, and they can just walk through the room quick with them and sweep them up and.
Three footers, you don't get a dustpan on broom?
Yes.
Yeah.
We should just get a zumbot and turn it on and we done.
No. So two of those, two of those. What's the noise down in the library? Be humming all day. So two of those dust brooms and. Uh, dustpan and broom.
So.
So I don't think we get two dustpans and brooms, just so they can clean up.
With, with beverages being allowed up there, should we think about making paper towels accessible in case there is a spill up there, someone can clean it?
Well, hopefully they're bringing some of that stuff with them.
Yeah, but like men's coffee, you guys don't carry, you're not gonna carry paper towels up there with you, so.
Because there's no good spot to really hang them, and we, if we have them, then we should hang them.
Well, can we get one of those paper towel holders or something, I'm like.
Get that closet for all the cleaning stuff.
And just have.
Get one holder, and we'll get some decent gray paper towels, and we'll have the cleaning people put one on.
Empty the quicker picker, I think. All right, that, that's a minimal expense that we keep.
I just think that, same thing, let's preserve our fluid, just. I'll find it's buttoned in the hallway, we can monitor where it's not gonna be.
Yeah, we hope it doesn't happen, but if it does, or at least they have the ability to clean it. Anything else in food and beverages, good? Okay, all right, uh, mi- they say minimum two responsible adults over the age of twenty months, family group of persons under the age of eighteen. Why, why is a nineteen year old considered irresponsible? Why is, why are we discriminating against eighteen and nineteen year olds? Two responsible adults.
I think.
Harry.
I think under eighteen. Right? No, 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 it's, if you're a sixteen year old group, like the head is sixteen.
Yeah.
They're saying you're gonna have two adults over eighteen.
I don't know why not over eighteen instead of twenty-one. Right, that's what I'm saying, they're rather twenty-one.
Over, over eighteen, need to be in the like, say, say there's a scout lead that's sixteen years old, and they wanna have a function up there, we're just saying we want an adult.
Two adults, eighteen, eighteen is adult.
I don't even know why I'm like, two, one adult. Right? Let's redo.
I, 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 I have to, one adult.
A minimum of.
I don't think we need two.
A minimum of one responsible adult.
Two adults.
Yeah.
Air adult.
Over the age of eighteen.
Thing is.
Must accompany any group with persons under the age of sixteen.
What, even scrap of eighteen? What is an adult? Is an adult a sixteen year old? No, is an adult a seventeen year old? An adult is eighteen years old.
Right, so that's why, a minimum of one responsible.
Adult, period.
Adult, over the age of eighteen must accompany a group of persons under the age of sixteen.
Right.
Scratch ratios.
I agree.
Yeah, we can't have it struck out there.
And advertising any of the banners and signage on the telecom needs prior approval by the board of selectmen, that's a good one, cause we're gonna be getting all the open places.
Yeah, all right.
I'll clean this up for you next week.
Yes, sir, but I thought it was a good, first I found out, what do you have, John?
Yep.
I wanna give kudos to Lena for, uh, listening to me.
Crapping the whip. I, if there's anything that's been going on.
Hey, we need to start on it, so the only way to do it is pull it by the bullet right on.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Yeah.
And then I'll work on the, uh.
That's pretty good, good start, good start, I'll review it as needed.
Can I just point out that this is what I kind of developed as a draft? Um, it's gonna have to be weekly, uh, these are the hours of the library on those dates. So if the board is in agreement, they had presented this, we're starting to talk about, uh. The scheduling of the second floor, and to get a visual, especially from my office, I'm just trying to think, how can we consolidate a whole weeks of events? And then have enough information on there that would get the first, the event type, person's name, the contact person, the phone number. Um, and hourly block of time that they're gonna wanna reserve so that nobody's double booking. And then always keep a calendar nearby so that we can have something to confirm dates with.
Lena, I don't, 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 uh, you gotta make something that works for you.
Yes, it's internal, and I ran it by Joe Marie, she understands it and is very, is okay with it, um, we've got a nice hard binder, binder here, that's probably a hundred years old, but we. Maybe try utilize that so we have a go-to book.
Keep it on dates.
Yeah.
Same thing, you know, there was one that flipped like this, a binder.
Yeah, we can do that as well.
Just so you could see the dates and.
Yeah, yeah.
Did Mary send you that?
That was when you first started, um.
What she want to put on the website? Another thing, Lena, can you make a note? I'd like to send a note to Mary and the trustees of the Dunbar Library. And say that the board of selectmen, Mike, you can adjust, and you better. Thank you for adjusting Tuesday and Thursday hours to seven P M.
I think she's already making a policy here, this is wrong. She goes, as far, I'm gonna read, okay, Justin, you're lying.
Yeah.
As far as scheduling meetings and events in the upper town floor, or upper town, for the upper town hall usage policy, no groups using, no groups should be using the second floor while the library is open. And it creates unacceptable noise levels. As it creates unacceptable.
I think that was done prior, unless, cause she didn't have this new one.
Right, but the thing is, we're not gonna allow, during, we're gonna allow people to meet during the business hours, and the thing is, uh, but we're not gonna have claw, uh, a square dance up there on a, uh.
On a zoe wagon rolling.
Yeah, and the thing is, um, I, I can't see, again, if it's unbearable, call one of the, Justin, we all go in and listen to it and say, "How unbearable is it?" We can adjust fire as we go forward, you see, Justin, you're right.
So the letter to the, to Mary and the, uh, thanking them for adjusting the hours on Tuesday and Thursday to seven P M, or at first. To allow better use of the town hall meeting area.
However, it's not gonna restrict, uh, it's gonna allow more noisy groups to be using during that time.
Right, but they're trying to.
Right, but the thing is, uh.
I thought that was a nice one, cause the seven and eight was an overlap, like if our meeting was there.
Right.
We told them we were gonna take president over anyway, we don't have to worry about that now. So I just thought we'd send that letter.
Yeah, but.
Thank you for meeting with board of selectmen, and your willingness to adjust your hours on Tuesday, Thursday to seven P M. To allow, what, other.
To, to facil- facilitate better utilization of the, of the, of the second floor.
To allow greater use of the second.
That's just, I don't know, guys. Yeah, to, to lean.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Situation was, Mary's concerned about noise, we're there too, and the thing is, uh, but I don't wanna, I'm gonna vote him on like, say, the, let's say the A A wants to go up there. And have a meeting like four o'clock on a Friday, on a Thursday afternoon, four o'clock, Black Ristle. They're not gonna, not, they're not gonna make a, uh, a racket, they're not gonna be dancing, singing songs.
Or even like cheer yoga.
Yeah, cheer yoga's kinda quiet, I think.
Uh, in that hallway upstairs in the entryway there, if most of the storage is in that closet, there's an area that's from the copier over here, that's. You know, a meeting room size, that you could have a small meeting in that area during an open hours if you wanted to.
Right, it'll be the physical, it looks nice up there.
But you know, in that, I'm talking the hall area that's over here, which won't be a factor in case, cause it's not below. At the top of the stairs in the front.
To, to the, to the left, to the left as you walk up.
Yeah. That meeting area is, you know, it's a pretty good sized area.
Ten people could fit, they're very comfortable.
Yep. We could even put the table there for, uh.
Initially, we start with.
Men's coffee.
The men's coffee.
I think it's actually there now, right? You're talking the front foyer?
No, I'm talking upstairs, when you go upstairs, at the very top of the stairs is the first room up there.
Was full of crap, that's all I could have cleaned out now.
Right, the one that has the lock, you wanna find?
No. They on the underside of the side of them.
Yeah, it looked like it had coat racks, old coat racks up there.
It had junk, it was just junk, yeah, it had coat racks, anybody, it was just junk.
I'm just trying to figure out what they used it for back in the day.
Oh, the coats were all hung there.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So as you went in, but it's, it's just, it wasn't a separate room, you just hung it on your way in. The whole front foyer area was all coat racks.
So good.
All right, all right, good, good, are we good with the policy? Let's move on. All right, have a comment. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board, and I'm gonna start with the town administrator.
I just wanna inform the board, I think I, I included you in this, in an email to the board of assessors. I met with them on Tuesday night, so that they could have a teleconference with our, uh, utility praiser, and, uh, they agreed to settle, um, both EverSource accepted the. Um, negotiation, so we have settled the twenty twenty year for our minimal dollars, does not affect their assessment in any way. Cause the new methodology is being applied in that calendar year, and the twenty twenty-one is due to, it has to be negotiated by September first, so we hope to have. September, uh, twenty twenty-one's negotiation behind us as well, and then the older years, um, seventeen to nineteen, I believe it is, are at the, um.
seventeen through nineteen, I believe it is, are at the, um, Superior Court, so these two being settled will probably, um.
How did the older ones get bypassed and not settled before the?
It's because they're already passed, the newer ones were required to, um, when you take it to the B T L A going forward, they can't take it to the B T L A, and so originally, the, the older ones were not settled, they couldn't se- settle at B T L A level, so they took it to the next level, whereas these haven't gotten to the courts, but they don't wanna see the newer appeals going to that level, they want you to settle.
When did we start applying the new methodology?
Two thousand eighteen.
So if we're applying the new methodology, starting at two thousand eighteen, the guy who was doing this for us, was setting it up so that we wouldn't have to have any negotiations, so why are we still?
It's because they have a right to do that, they didn't go with our original settlement, because, um, right before COVID, there was all the different communities that met up and conquered for a Saturday.
I remember reading his assessment on, he thought with this new methodology, if we moved it, we wouldn't end up owing anything, like, see now we're owing, and.
Right.
I just don't understand that either his methodology is not working, or we're gonna have to continue this forever with public service?
Well, that's the argument, is there, they, the methodology's been applied, there's a small twenty percent value of the transmission lines that they disagree with, and that's what they're fighting, so now that they understand how the formula was calculated, and how the adjustment was applied to the other utility companies, when we gave them a, a very small, uh, reduction in their assessment, they backed off.
In other words, it hasn't been settled with them, in other words, they haven't agreed to the methodology.
They are, they're, they're finally accepting the fact that the state, at the state level, accepted that, that methodology, that's the new formula of how they're going to.
I mean, hopefully someday we don't have to keep this, maybe some amount of money, and they end up saying out there.
Well, um, they didn't apply for twenty-twenty-two, uh, the deadline for abatements in the prior year is April fif- uh, March first, and I didn't receive any applications for abatements.
Yeah, the lawyer probably didn't, we just haven't seen it yet.
I don't know.
The thing is, the only thing is, what's nice, whenever we see a poll change out, always sign improvement, because that means the appraisal, then we start to do evaluation, the evaluation goes out, is I, am I correct?
Correct, but one thing that we do here in our town is that when we do get those, um, improvements that the town clerk includes me with, is those get forwarded to our utility praiser right away, so that it's not a document that's lost in the shuffle or forgotten about, whereas they can come back and say, in five years, these have increased our value by a million dollars, and they try to, they try to push back with the value amount, and if you have permits that you're improving, that's clearly the evidence that we have, because that, technically, the utility appraiser could come into our office and ask to look at all those permits, which, if they didn't have the ability to scan it to them, that's what they would be doing, coming in here and looking at them, so.
Okay, there's what it is, I guess.
No, but the thing is, uh, but every, every year, you're right, it seems going forever, we have so much in abatements.
Right, so typically.
What do we set, like, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand, and you would think that with, no, I've only had one abatement application for twenty-twenty-two, that one's already been settled, the two-hundred-dollar adjustment, uh, refund, but going forward, when we set the tax rate in October, the board has the, um, decision to make and set that overlay once again, when we set that tax rate. The issue, though, is when the signs that we see, the overlay, get depleted completely or exceeded from the, what we said it at, is in a revaluer, or when the tax rate goes up, so I anticipate seeing an influx of abatement applications next March, after everyone receives their tax bill, only because they just don't understand that taxes should not have gone up that much, they feel like their home is valued at this much, but, so this, it's because they're not understanding the whole process, so we will see an influx of, of applications for abatements, whether you wanna, you know, so I'm not gonna recommend that you reduce that overlay until we know for sure that things have been settled, so, and so unfortunate, those are the years that we see, uh, an increase of, uh, abatements.
Okay, okay, anything else?
Audit is scheduled for the last week of April, so we'll have these tables, um, completely booked for a full week with our auditors. We're doing really well with reconciliation, uh, we are reconciled through February, and here it is, the end of March, and we're just waiting to get the treasurer's February reconciliation, and so right now, we're reconciling to the bank, so we're doing really well with keeping up.
And just, just for the record, we were like nine months in arrears before at least, correct?
Always, yeah, it just was difficult to get that person who sat at that accounting desk to reconcile through the system, then they have to do it again to reconcile to another software, so it's like double reconciliation, but we've gotten the handle on it, we're doing well, I've got, we still have, um, a CPA that lives in Fold, that's very helpful, if we have any, um, kind of glitch or any setbacks that can be able to help us, but.
Okay, and last, as I get to the hotspot, uh, you, if the, our request for information, you're working on, you could delay a minute.
I responded to her on Monday, so I met that five-day requirement for the right to know, um, and I did explain to her the schedule that I have coming up in the month of April, so I gave her, uh, April, May nineteenth.
So you complained with R S A?
I did, and then I told her I wouldn't give her any information if it came, you know, sooner than that time period, so.
Anything else? Dave, you go first.
Um, I talked about most everything, um, Lena, Pro Technologies, I seen you and Justin taking pictures of the yellow ones up there.
Yeah, he's gonna show us, so I can, like, so they can see what it is that they.
Just want those, that are nice and clean, that's what it is.
It's not, it's not really clean, they're.
Just a cover.
Well, no, the, the mechanism, right, ten years is gonna be replaced, that's the recommendation.
Yeah, they'll be able to tell me if that needs to be.
For now, just have them go during Mary's hours with the library, because she lives in her closet, okay?
But they gotta go through the whole building, because there's a lot of yellow ones up there.
A lot of store upstairs.
Yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole.
And they gotta bring that exit sign, gonna have them do it, Pro Technologies?
Um, I would just, I guess, exit side, I would just have Alan Byron do it if you want.
Yeah. All, all you need to do is disconnect it.
Because the good ones there, you can just disconnect it and cover it.
Yeah.
Mary called him today for a question, he's the one that put that outlet downstairs for us. He's, uh, just for the record, really, to go out and send a special thank you to Alan Byron and his electric company, because he's done a ton of work up there. He did all those outlets, and all that lighting outlets, and he put that outlet downstairs for us today, he's just been.
Headway class, headway class. Let's acknowledge him.
In fact, let's, can we send him a little?
That's what's like.
I've got it drawn out in here.
Yeah, okay, in two weeks, we can set it up.
Yeah, that'd be really nice.
Alright, um, the state inspection is coming, what?
State inspection on the elevator, tried to get them to woo it up, and I've got nothing back from the elevator company, he's, he's gonna be on the fourteen. It's like we're paying for, Lena and I had that set up a couple days afterwards, and it was all functioning, leading over, the elevator guy has tested, it's all working, all we do is have the state guy come back and see in five minutes, kind of.
Okay, so, anything else to be good?
I think we're good, all the other stuff, the handler, they've come back and rewired that upstairs, and electrician's finishing his wiring to it now, it's all, like Mike said, it's all odds and ends are arguing in the works.
It's just, uh, the final details seem to be the worst, the last punch you missed.
It's hard to get everybody to come back to finish up the last little bit of stuff, because they've been dogs for so long.
I, I really like the flow rate going up the stairs, because they're, uh, water, like, water resistant.
Can I ask you one more question, did we finally inspect the sprinkler system, then we still have a deposit?
Um, that sprinkler system is all up and functioning, we let that deposit go, we're only doing the, uh, we're doing a springtime April test on it.
Right, and we've gotten that confirmation from you that, that was done, so now I can release that.
You want, you wanna wait for the test, or you wanna?
No, because it's really just a flow test, there's nothing, if the, if the flow test, if the, if, what happens is, the tank that they're drawing it off of was drawing down two.
Right, remember, yeah, remember that.
They're gonna put a baffle system in there, if it does flow like that again, so I'm not too worried about it.
So are you sure you wanna release that five-thousand-dollar?
Yeah, it's only five thousand dollars, I think it's minimal.
Okay. Justin?
Awesome. Okay, um, I just wanted to, if you didn't know, the police department will ask their candidate, did we talk about that last week? The second candidate they had?
Oh, the first one's.
The first one's still.
Yeah, that, he starts on, on Monday.
She scared me, I thought she.
He starts on Monday, we've already finished all the paperwork.
Thing is, I'd say we just cut the police department down, since we're on a roll.
Good one. Keep the behavior, go ahead and bring that.
No, the thing is, uh, he, he sent a very interesting article on email to office, um, I thought was a good overview of, uh, the shortcomings of the, of hiring police department across New Hampshire, and some of the smaller communities can't afford ten, fifteen thousand dollar bonuses like the state police can do.
Okay, I called Lena to that article, what? Because after looking at the dollar amounts in their Dunbar, it's right up around that scale, so even though it's a good overall letter to the slide, when they show how different departments are doing.
We're doing pretty good.
We're doing pretty good, we're paying three to four dollars more than some of the other ones are paying, so.
But we're not paying any bonuses, and I think, because I respect the fact that, uh, the chief doesn't wanna pay bonuses, because what does that say to the person already on board? He's not good enough to, maybe he quits and comes back with the bonus, it doesn't work well.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't like it either.
Okay, um, that's all I had for now, I think is, uh, we need two weeks, unless there's an issue, but I don't foresee there'll be an issue.
And if there is an issue, Mike, um, sometimes Justin and I can meet during the daytime.
Oh, yeah, no, I think his key word is flexibility, and I think is, uh, we'll make it, we'll make it work.
And those, those will arise, and we'll just meet during the daytime and make it work, we'll make sure to notify Leo, because Rob, he can.
Okay, I'm waiting for a motion, gentlemen.
I'm waiting for a motion to adjourn meeting at eight fifty-five.